Hello everyone, I'd like to call the 20th meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission of Order. First item on my agenda is to adopt the agenda just before I turn to my colleagues here. For those of you who might be here thinking there would be a hearing tonight on the Marne list tower, because we've yet to receive all of the supplemental information from the last meeting, that application is not on the agenda tonight. You know, if you'd like, it would be a general public comment period, you can feel free to share your views at that time, but there will be hearings on the applications given by later date, assuming that you can get that information and that application looks forward. So, my apologies if that was your sole reason for coming out tonight, but I thought I would clarify that. Could I have a motion that we adopt the agenda? Are there any additions or recommended changes to the agenda?
I'm in favor.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the next item, would you be approval of the minutes from our May 16th meeting? If you all received them, they're on board docs. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes? If not, I would indicate a motion to approve the minutes. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, at this point, I'm going to open the first of what could be three opportunities for the public to comment this evening. The first is a general public comment period. You can address any subject that might be on your mind. I would ask that you identify yourself in the district or location you're from, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. I'll note also, I'll note also that there will be separate hearings on the two items, the two tourist home applications, but those will be the only other two items that are open for hearings. So, anything else you hear to comment on, I suggest you comment during the public comment period. And we have brought the audio equipment here this evening, so if you wouldn't mind, if you have a comment, just step forward to the microphone and please address your comments to the commission. So, with that, I will open the general public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Irwin. Phil Irwin, Flint Hill. I understand that the public's sound system is down to three for you, six for the board supervisor. Anyway, let me remind you of the number of times that I have suggested that in order for a sound system to work, you have to be in front of the microphone, and these microphones should be one fist away if we're going to be at all participating in your conference hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Need a bigger fist. Anyone else like to speak?
I don't think anybody else wants to.
I just want to note that Mr. Irwin didn't use a microphone, so neither am I, and I'm using it.
It's your prerogative. Depends on your desire to be heard.
I'm Stowe Mall District, I'm going to address the commission about a couple of three things. First of all, I've noticed that the last, I think, two meetings, you have gone through this procedure of like some kind of a preliminary review of applications before you have a public hearing off of a special use and special exception term. And I think I wrote a note to Gary Curry, and I copied you all on it, but I see you're doing it again anyway. And I just want to say, first of all, as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, although I don't speak for them, we have had some discussion about it. I think we're going to be communicating something officially, but there's nothing in the code of Virginia that requires the planning commission to have a public hearing on these special use applications. I know you've been doing it, I don't know how that got started, I don't know why they do it. You can discuss it if you want to have public comment, you're certainly allowed to do it, but I'm just saying the statute doesn't require you to have a formal public hearing before you make your recommendation to whatever board, the DZA or the supervisors who have, they have the approval authority. That's number one. So, I just think, as a member of the public, this is a tremendous inconvenience for people that are applying, because not only time-wise, it means it takes at least three months to get anything through, whereas just last year, a year before you started this deferring or delaying or whatever, you could apply at the beginning of the month, as long as you got it in 15 days. If you got it in by the first of the month, you could have your planning commission hearing two weeks later, you can have your DZA or board supervisor meeting two weeks or one week or two weeks after that, and you'd be done in 30 days, and now it takes 90 days.
One more minute, Mr. Conick.
Okay, great. That's one thing. I wish you'd stop doing it, or I wish you'd get an opinion on it and stop doing it. Number two, I see the list of amendments is on again. About three or four different things are not on there that were discussed. One is the healthcare facilities, 10 beds or less or greater than 10 beds. But what if you have exactly 10? Same thing for schools. That was pointed out, they fell off the list. So did adaptive use, was beat to death for about four meetings, you finally came up with some, you never had a public hearing, it's not on the list, the proposed change that the commission agreed to. And the bunch of the other things that the commission went over and over and over and voted on every single thing on the list of proposed amendments that in part I generated. Now, they're all thrown open again for more debate and some comments from, I'm not sure who they're from, but you know, that obviously did participate in the discussion, so they would know the answers to the questions that they're now raising again for the third or fourth time that the commission went over. So, I wish that you would straighten that out if I can help do it. I'm glad to do it. I've given a list of Mr. Curry and of Michelle, so they have all that stuff, but if there's anything that I have to do to expedite it, that's fine. Last but not least, the comp plan. I see you've got a whole bunch of materials on board docs, I looked at some of them, some of it's very voluminous. The commission needs to study that stuff, and it needs to do a little bit of a build-out analysis and take that raw data and don't just patch it into the thing and say, okay, we're done. I think you really need to do some thinking and analysis based on the information that you've got and come up with two things. One is to see is the comprehensive plan doing what you hoped it would do when you wrote it, or whoever wrote it, wrote it back in 2004? And if the answer to that is no, and I suggest the answer is no, then what can you do to clean up the comprehensive plan in chapter six, the goals, principles, and policies, so that it will get the job done?
Thanks for listening. Thank you, Mr. Conick. Anyone else who would like to make a general comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Mike Newby from the Piedmont District, and I'm here just to throw out a few comments about the CWS tower. Last month's meeting, you all requested that CWS do a balloon test. They're doing that this Saturday, I hope you all got that notification. I hope you all can at least stop by and take a look at it, but a couple of things I wanted you to keep in mind. The balloon test, assuming that it's not a windy day, only shows the elevation, it does not show the enormity or the magnitude of the structure itself. It is also being done in the middle, well, not in the middle of summer, but in summer when we have full foliage. This is a year-round thing. We've requested in the past that they do this also in the wintertime, so people can see it without the leaves, what it actually looks like. Again, I'd like you all to keep that in mind. I mean, half the year, there's no leaves there, that's when we really have our view from the top of the hill, looking out now with the tower in front of us. During the fall, winter, and early spring, we're going to see a majority of the tower. Also, I think it was five, six years ago, whenever they, CWS AT&amp;T came through here, they still had the same statement in there that the tower would not be 20 feet above the tree line. Let me tell you, the trees there are not 170 feet, or 174 feet, or 100, whatever it is, it's going to be well above the 20 foot that's in their application. And again, we've request that you send this back to CWS and have them look for other locations that meet the needs of the cell community, fire and rescue service. Due diligence really has not been done. You can't say that you've looked at two places, and when I say you, I'm talking about the CWS, and that's all that's available. The lady from CWS last month made a mistake. She said that line of sight is not necessary, and she is wrong, flat out wrong. Line of sight is necessary for cell tower to work efficiently. They have not provided you a plan. What they're doing is they're going to put one at the furthest location, knowing that when they come back in a couple of months, a couple of years, that you will almost have to approve ones going back closer towards either the Castleton or the Boston Tower in Culpeper, or back towards Amistad. I would ask that you require a thought-out plan, and you know, just put the pressure back on them. The clock has to start based on last month's meeting. Don't let it start, because once it starts, everybody's pretty much helpless. And one other thing that does not relate to the cell tower, in the spirit of full transparency, and I don't know whether you all can do this or not, I'd like to see some kind of a response back from you all, or whoever we send emails to, or whatever type of communications, and the same with the board supervisors, maybe Mr. Parrish can take back to them, that we know that you've received it and read it. Whether you agree with it or disagree, that's a different story, but we do send emails out, and we don't hear anything back, so we don't know whether people are getting the information. I have read receipt turned on on my email, but you all can turn it off so that it won't send one back to us. Now, I know you all are busy, but there's got to be some way that we, the public, know that you're receiving the information. Thank you.
My last point, I would suggest that you should see those materials end up in board docs for the availability for the public review, but point well taken. Any more comments? Anyone else care to speak? Yes?
Hi, Yoko Barski, Hampton District. I would like to bring up to your attention the comment on the map posted for the comprehensive plan. I was following up on Mr. Conick's comment too, but the comprehensive plan, this commercial zone map, does not reflect any commercial areas that are designated and zoned as commercial now. And I'm sure these people pay commercial taxes, and why these areas are not included in the comprehensive plan, I just don't know. But I dug up a few materials a couple of years ago. I'll be happy to share with you and work on this map if you choose to do so. So, I'm available.
Great, thank you. I think we'll be getting into that issue at least likely later on in the day. Thank you, sir. The other general public comment? Yes, sir.
Paige Lee, Jackson District. I'd like to talk about the comprehensive plan. And it's very interesting data, but there seems to be, a lot of very interesting data, but there seems to be some critical information missing, such as a housing inventory by price range, or the number of B&amp;Bs and tourist homes, the number of beds that we've already approved, and perhaps even what their occupancy rates are. But aside from that, I would just like to know, what are your insights from that data? What did you learn from it? What ideas do you have to accomplish the comprehensive plan goals? I mean, considering that the county seems, by the data that's there, to be changing in the opposite direction of goal number one. What other data do you feel is necessary to make informed planning decisions? I'd really like to hear the answers to those three questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Anyone else care to speak?
Can I have one more quick minute? Sorry, I forgot my notes here. Again, Mike Newby from the Piedmont District. One of the things to keep in mind when dealing with CWS is that where we live, we have cell service. There are places that are sorely needed to have cell service, like 231 down towards Madison. That property where the homeowner who's willing to have the tower put, has a number of acres there that maybe they could look at different locations that gets it further away from our property and not hinder our, or hurt our property value. Like I said, we get, you know, we get cell service. We get DSL from Verizon. Matter of fact, I assume it was Verizon, but somebody just, some company just ran FiOS down Woodward Road from the town of Sperryville back out to 211, all the way along there. And I don't know what more it's going to take for them to run down Woodward Road back further into Jenkins Poller, but you know, I think everybody needs to look at the whole plan, you know, what's happening, so they're not overlapping, and if people get the best service possible, and putting it where people already have service, may have the waste. Sorry for the interruption.
Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Before we go on, I know there's nothing on the agenda, but I want to address one of the issues raised in the comments, you know, is the question about whether the planning commission should have public hearings. I would note that the change that was alluded to was a change that put us in compliance with our ordinance where we had not been in compliance before. And I'll also note that we have had a legal opinion on this matter, and certainly the case that we are not compelled to hold a public hearing, but in the interest of being well-informed in our provision of advice, and certainly within the planning commission's right and authority and general practice to do so, and while I think there may be some work to do to work on the kind of efficiency of the notice, it is my intent to continue to work within the parameters and to hold public hearings on most special permit applications, except in rare cases where the commission feels confident rendering an opinion without giving the valuable input from the public. So, just on that point, thank you. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for special use, special use permit 180404, the tourist home. Ms. Summers, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-back house. It's located at 122 Sequoia Street, Chester Gap. The property is zoned village residential. The health department suggested moving the driveway, but had no objection to the application. Both applicant and myself reached out to VDOT with no response. The owners, which you all have handed out on the table, provided additional information as requested, an operating agreement with the owner, a statement addressing hot tub on the property, a sketch of the property, and they agreed with the provided state or safety list that we have been incorporating with all the tourist home's special use permit applications. And the applicants are here. If any commissioner has any questions.
Thank you. I guess before, before I open the public hearing, do applicants like to add anything? Sorry, I drew that, sorry. Nothing to add. Okay, well, if not, I'll hereby open the public hearing on this special use permit. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this application? Looks like there is no public comment on this application, so I will close the public hearing and turn to the commissioners. I believe, Ms. Mead, this is.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I had a question of staff. I was curious if the health department had had an opportunity to weigh in on the applicant's proposal that we saw today, because the letter from the health department says that it needs to be moved, not just protect the head.
I would defer that to the applicant, Ms. Mead. We had decided, I mean, from the recommendations of making a kind of like a place to possibly sit, so you could like railroadize by four by eight section, that would eliminate, you know, any cause for a car to drive over where the subject tank cover is. So, there was, you know, some ideas of putting maybe a big rock there, some shrubbery, like put it that it wouldn't be a problem.
Sure. With that said, I'm uncomfortable making a recommendation until we've had the health department weigh in. I'm not familiar with where the tank is located versus where the head is located. So, because they gave us a very strong recommendation that it be modified, I just would rather get their blessing before we make a recommendation. That's just my, I'm only one voice.
I know they had, the people who put the tank on had made it, I mean, that would be not a problem. So, yeah, I mean, it was done in a safe manner. It's sort of good.
Thank you, Ms. Mead. Mr. Parrish, should I go your direction on this one?
Well, other than that, I don't have any problem with it. It seems like a nice location. I visited the property and the first time, and I know it seems like a logical use for the place.
Still can't hear you. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Burr?
I agree with Mr. Parrish, but I do think that Ms. Mead's question is a valid one, and that for that to be satisfied according to the health department, I would be in favor of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Send comments, this is Ms. Mead, just position the subject. Thank you, yes. Just to be clear, if I understand Ms. Mead, then the concern is less about the cover and accessibility as it is to the structural integrity of the tank, and it's not clear from the information provided that protecting the cover would necessarily address the concern. So, I don't know, I guess just another point of clarification, I know when we heard this application originally, there was some question of, I don't think the hot tub was working, and there was some question as to whether it would be made functional. I assume from the response provided that it is the intent to fix and keep the hot tub built. Well, I'm not sure where that leaves us with respect to your recommendation.
I'm prepared to make a motion. I recommend we postpone action until we have confirmation from the health department and close the public hearing. I don't see any reason to keep the public hearing open, and we have to know public comment tonight, and I don't anticipate it changing, just seek the health department and help.
That's good, since I've already closed it, so I'm glad to hear that. Is motion? Gentlemen, any second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Looks unanimous. Thank you very much. I guess you will follow up with the health department. The next item on the agenda this evening is special use permit number 18-04-03, the Greenwell tourist home. Ms. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Greenwell has had a platform tourist home located at 353 Aaron Mountain Road. The property is 40 acres in size and is zoned agricultural. It is a three-bedroom home, and the health department has approved a three-bedroom septic. The health department did recommend pumping the septic every three years. They had no objections to the proposal though. Both applicant and I have reached out to VDOT with no response. They have provided a house schedule layout and a plat with a house driveway, parking is marked, and the applicants are present for any questions you all may have.
Ms. Summers, before I open it up to the public, would the applicant like to add anything?
Just quickly. So, Amanda Greenwell is my husband's daughter, and we just wanted to let you guys know we bought that property in 2016 with the potters, and have been out here every week basically since. We love that area. We love getting away from the city. We wish we could be here full-time, we just can't do that right now at the moment. My husband is a two-time Iraq army vet, and he used to, you know, dream of owning land one day where we could raise our boys, and we've created a lot of great memories here. We hope to create more. He'd like to retire here someday. We, the property taxes went up quite significantly for us to start here, and we've always started sports, so we thought renting this out current time would be a good opportunity for us. We were not aware of the requirements in terms of the special use permit, and so as soon as we got the letter from the treasury commissioner, we made sure that we reached out, got all the information in terms of what was required. It has been a complex and confusing process, but we're committed to, you know, going through the process and making sure we get you the information. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing on this application. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, sir, in fact.
Yes, I don't know how the process works, my first time. I'm the contiguous neighbor at 331. My name is Edward Timberlake. I own, my only property is 331 Aaron Mountain.
Great.
I prepared seven documented of my testimony to pass it around to you guys. I don't know how it works.
That's fine, written words is the best way to make sure.
There you go. I have three minutes.
Sure, three minutes would be great.
I came to Rappahannock in 2000, it's my only property. I moved in to my wife, selling a house in Annapolis. I'm a combat disabled veteran from Vietnam, and also was in IG in Iraq. We wanted to build a farm out, and our model was their property. In fact, James Greigby kept his cattle on that for almost 20, 30 years, wherever it was, and if you ever saw 331 Aaron Mountain, the trees right in back, we hired James Compton on prayer for its health, and he's a genius, and he made a farm, and it took 20 years or 18 years to get to that point. I followed the guidance of the white Eisenhower, who said, when he became Farmer Eisenhower, "I wish to find a piece of land and make better than I found it." So, it's good enough. I fell in love with Rappahannock 10 years ago. I wrote this in a column about She-Town when women took over the town of Washington, it's pretty famous. "It takes a certain type of courage to get involved in small-town politics. Up close and personal, mayors and elected officials must make very hard decisions that can go against a close friend, a neighbor, an elementary or high school classmate. By the very nature of the political process, compromises are required, but ultimately a vote is taken for executive action and a public record is created. Small-town politics of not lawyer-driven, abstract activating societies, they're real and lasting." And I learned that. Your neighbors are your best allies. And I got a petition of people who want to say no, and quite frankly, they're my neighbors, and I say no. The bottom line I have here is that, I understand, I write, I write in International Journal, the challenge of Airbnbs and stuff like that, and the internet. Internet has great promise and great danger. The internet can bring people in, they're just name and money, you don't know who they are. Many rural counties will have to go through this to figure out how to structure that. It's a challenge, good or bad. I was only given two days' notice, and I don't need more time, but I scrambled to get the petition. I'm saying this in sorrow and not anger. What happened is that when I was surprised by this, I also asked James Greigby, who keeps his cows down on my property, what he thinks of what happened. He wrote a statement, I'll leave it for you all to read, I don't care if it's covered. But we did find the neighbors. The most tangible, congruent, impactful statement in the world are your neighbors, and this county knows that. So, I also recognize Eisenhower said, "I was raised in a small town, of which most of you have never heard of, in the west, it's a famous place, it's Adley, Kansas. Now, that town has a code, and I was raised as a boy to prize that code. It was, meet anyone face-to-face with whom you disagree. So, in scrambling, I tried to find the local lawyer, found out a couple of them engaged in the journey, and because of that, the conflict of interest was, I couldn't talk to him." That's fine, but along the way, why didn't someone just say, "Meet your neighbor," and tell him what you're doing? Came out of the blue. Finally, the big deal is, I don't know what it is on this, so I had a bunch of questions, and simply saying is, "What's a tourist home?" I looked in the dictionary. It defines a place where rooms in somebody's house are rented to travelers. That's the definition of a house. It's a building for human habitation, lived by a family or group. I don't even know if this tourist home is their voting list. I don't know anything about it. Will tourists, i.e. be vetted, or are they simply names with money? Who's going to brief them? Will they be properly supervised by the people there? Or is it just something they'll shove? Or is it just something they'll shove off with keys? And will they be briefed not to go on Old Church Road, which is our road that is on my property? It is a very serious concern that the owner should be present when the tourists are renting the room. Or will they hire someone? Or is one of the people signing the rest, the petition said, "That's their words, as typical Rappahannock in your face," and heck, why don't we just build a Holiday Inn and put it there? Be done with it. So I fully understand the importance of tourism. Economic development can be for Rappahannock County, but it has to be done with all citizens' respect for the environment, appropriate commercial controls when dealing with issues of commerce and consumer affairs, and often significant insurance considerations. I don't know how this one's going to go, but I'll leave you with one last thing with Dwight Eisenhower. I liked that as a kid. "The proper role of government, however, is that it partner with the farmer, never his master. By every possible means, we must develop and promote that partnership to the end that agriculture may continue to be a sound, enduring foundation for our economy and that farm living may be a profitable and satisfying experience." Address nineteen fifty-six. The petition, I brought my daughter who will live in the house with my other daughter eventually, in perpetuity, we hope, as it passes down. That's my grandson Tristan and my young granddaughter Kate. And I actually had him sign the petition. You can see the signature, Kate, which boy is the petition? So a lawyer will say, "Oh, five-year-old can't sign petition." But I did it for a purpose. Because when Kate is my age, it would be the year twenty-eight. And I want my family to pick up the traditions of the Greedys, the Suddles, the Complains, the great names that flow through this county over time for hundreds of years. And where traditions start, they have to start sometime, someplace. And that is my stand today with a farmer in Rappahannock and I'm proud to have you all as neighbors. Thank you.
Sir, would you, if I may ask?
Yes.
Uh, if you're looking at this, uh, proposed tourist home, are you to the right or to the left?
As you face it, I'm to the left. I'm the new power.
Downhill toward Rock Mills.
Yes, downhill towards Rock Mills. They have a better site than the other way. And by building this, by building it out and spending a lot of money, Richard, knocking down trees, putting a pond in, my taxes went up because my view was better. I accepted that.
So you have the house that's got the front porch and the pond.
I have a little eighteen-ten log cabin. It was a ramshackle cabin. That all the trees were around.
Right.
We went in, fixed it up. I had an Alcoa, which my insurance firm said, "You gotta take it down, block." I had it just a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
I brought in on the locals.
Right.
I mean, I, wood is expensive by the way. And we had put in wood that will age, because I wanted to save it. I could have bulldozed it for about five hundred bucks. Instead, I built it because it's historic. So you know the property.
I've been in the house.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but the, um, uh, so you're not contiguous? There, there's a property in between?
No, no. Old Church Road is my road. It touches their property.
Oh, you're contiguous?
Yes, I am, very much so. And if you read James Greedy's comments.
And so the right of way is what goes through?
No, the right of way is mine. I have to give you.
And that goes back?
They did not have a right of way. The farm property that they had had a right of way. They do not have a right of way. They don't have an answer. I own Old Church Road. And I give you reasons to be settled and, um, you can't.
So the entrance to our property is off the state maintained road?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, you got good side distance there.
Right.
I know that, yeah.
So my big fear, of course, is people seeing Old Church Road coming in, jogging, riding on. This is very kind. You're fair.
Yeah, yeah.
And that scares me. Because I don't know who they are. And I went to Sheriff Connie and asked him, "What does this county do about that?" You know, we trespasses. Well, I'm being posted correctly. And I do, but then I learned to have to post up high, high high. Because I'm going to pull them off and post. Terrible promise, county posts. You don't know that. That's why Alvin Girdy sits on my porch and watches the property. The bottom line is I have to post it correctly, but then if someone wanders over without a bad, with a bad briefing, they're trespassing. The sheriff will come, arrest them and prosecute. These kind of briefings have to be made known if you're going to have a tourist home to protect the liability and perhaps somebody get, you know, put in jail. So all of this is a mystery to me and why a forty acre farm is converted to a tourist commercial home. I just don't understand.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake.
Thank you.
I will note that this application was on the agenda and was discussed, uh, at the last public hearing, so I'm sorry that, uh, you were, uh, not.
Sir, it was notified Saturday morning at midnight and had two Rappahannock A, each of those Friday. I should respond to it.
So can I draw some of the others?
Why don't we finish the public comments and see if there's something more for you to add? Uh, is there, are there any other public comments, uh, on this application? And if I could ask both to keep aside conversations to a minimum of, you know, should the hearing be? Anybody else care to comment? Yes, ma'am?
Michelle, could you, my sister? Um, I didn't hear anything specific from the gentleman who preceded me against this application. And, and what I do see tonight are two couples trying to get an application. And it seems like they've been through, that, uh, Mr. Connick's point. Let's see, rings of paper there in front of you. Um, I, I believe in consistent standards. I believe in standards, absolutely. I understand people's concerns. I'm happily engaged owners. I don't own an Airbnb. I don't own an Airbnb. Uh, in the interest of disclosure, I am friends with Amanda and George. But I have watched this issue evolve. Even your twenty years. So it started to come up, like, five years ago, ten years ago. And I just think the county still hasn't settled on what is it that we're asking these applicants to do. And I don't hear either applicant here tonight objecting to any consistent standards that the county may ask them to fulfill. But I do think it's wrong to put out some standards. People try to apply it, they come back and the goal goes smooth. Right? And, and, so, so as a general point, the county should, should get to, you know, what are we, concerned about noise, sure, which is, right? If the gentleman's concerned that somebody is going to come on to his property, sure, which is, but I, I don't hear any, either of these sets of owners or George and Amanda, you know, saying anything that would indicate that they're not going to be engaged. I also think there are misperceptions. And Airbnb is not a full-time hotel business. Right? I mean, it's a supplemental income kind of thing. And in order to be successful in Airbnb, your property has to be immaculate, from the research I've done. So, so what I'm saying is there is a high standard. Owners are rated, visitors are rated. And if there's some other standard the county wants to oppose, let these applicants meet it and go on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, my company wrote the, uh, policies for Airbnb and I'll tell you that they actually do background checks on anybody staying in property. So they do a criminal background check on, uh, on people who are staying in Airbnb properties. So that will be a very good filter to make sure that no undesirables turn up.
Could you ask me a question?
Could you, uh, please, uh? Sorry, my, my name is Mike Light. I'm the chief operating officer of a company called RSM. Will you write business continuity policies for organizations?
So you do the business plan for their market?
No, no, I have no idea who these two are.
Oh, okay.
Um, but all I'm, all I'm saying is that we wrote the policies for Airbnb.
Oh, so the policy, but it's not applied. You don't sign?
No, I do, because I wrote it.
Okay, if I could.
No, no, Airbnb apply the, the filter.
All right. Appreciate it, Chris. Yes, ma'am.
So while I have some, I just want to, um, make one point. Uh, we had a property at one point in time that was contiguous to an individual that is a longstanding family member or longstanding individual in Rappahannock County. And he did a yearly lease with somebody who was on the sex offender list. And there was nothing we could do about that. So for me, Airbnb would actually have been safer for us than who this individual rented to on a yearly basis.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments on this application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. Connie from Stonewall District. I'm, I'm not going to really speak to this specific application because it's coming to the BCA next week for a hearing, but I do want to point out that the Board of Zoning Appeals has had numerous discussions and we had a work session to discuss the problems that things have been highlighted by this. And again, I'm not going to speak one way or the other on this particular one, but I want to reiterate a point that I've made, I think, to the commission over and over and over and over again. And this zoning ordinance was written in nineteen eighty-five. A tourist home was like the cabin, like down in Sturridgeville, a bunch of little homes and little huts or you rent them out. That was a tourist home. There wasn't any internet. There wasn't an Airbnb. It was Al Gore hadn't invented it yet. So you're trying, instead of taking the ordinance, which is your job as a commission, to say, just like Chris's point about solar farms, hey, that's something nobody ever thought of when they did, uh, the ordinance back then, we need to look at this and we need to come up with a new definition that fits these situations and deals with it appropriately, instead of trying to cram a square peg into a round hole and say, "Oh, well, this, we'll call it a tourist home because the commission or the zoning administrator we had at the time was too lazy to formulate a new definition and new group of standards to deal with this kind of thing." So you have all these concerns of the neighbors. Sometimes they're, whether you think they're valid or you don't think they're valid, it's not, it isn't fair. And I think that's the point I really want to focus on. Not this particular thing, but it's not fair to the neighbors or other people or the applicants who think they're gonna, this is what they're supposed to apply for because we don't have a definition that fits this particular use in the ordinance. And so, uh, I think I would like to recommend to the commission that you do that. And that a lot of this is in the May, so-called May amendments, even though they were proposed in March of two thousand and sixteen, two years and three months. Tonight, it's one year since this commission voted to have a public hearing last September. You still haven't had it. And I wish you would do it when you get around to it because a lot of what's in there, including whether or not you have to have somebody that's a resident of the county, that it's their house, that they're domiciled here and that they are going to be on site when the people are there or not, whatever, it's all going to be defined if those amendments would be considered and passed. So I wish you would do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Connick. Very well. So would you like to speak on this application? Give the applicant opportunity to respond, please, to us about any, any reaction to any of the other questions.
Sure. So I just want to say, um, we had walked around and, and tried to talk to all of our neighbors and, and I'm sorry that we missed you, Mr. Timberlake. Um, we did talk in person to, um, especially the, the neighbor that's to the left if we're facing the street. Um, we actually do have two local contacts, so we come onto the, the property and make sure that we have everything laid out. We lay out very clear ground rules in terms of directions, as well as what the property lines are, where you can go, where you cannot go. Exactly as the gentleman, uh, behind us said, we, one of the reasons we really liked the Airbnb site is because it has really, uh, helpful filters in terms of the people that can, um, even request a room from. Because you can put in certain things to say they have to be verified by government ID, background check, all of those things. So we put in the strictest piece possible to make sure that we're not getting any crazies. Um, I know that you guys had, um, requested, you know, okay, six maximum and you did the two cars and all the safety features, which we, um, completely agree with and had all the safety features in, you know, already before we had put anything up. Um, you know, we make sure that we have, uh, they've got our cell numbers and contacts. And like I said, we have local contacts in case there's anything that goes on with that. I believe the gentleman brought up insurance. We have insurance that covers the, the house and it covers part-time renters, so in case anything happens with that. In addition to that insurance, Airbnb also has insurance that's covered for, um, anything that, that goes, uh, could possibly happen during that time. Um, as far as the stranger piece and the, the trespassing signs, that's something that George and I struggle with as well in terms of owning our own property and being there on the property and having people come on, come when they're not invited. So, um, I completely sympathize with that and that's why it is something we, we lay out really clearly to say that it is just confined to our forty acres and, and no other area. And give clear directions to both the towns and businesses.
Thank you very much. Oh, close the public comment period? Is this, this? Mr. Chairman, would you like to start off the conversation?
Yep. Back in, um, I got my real estate license in nineteen eighty-six. And the company in Orange and Mount Vernon, we could have my license with. Two or three years into that, maybe eighty-eight, lady that, her husband owned this property, the potters, uh, came to me to, to rent this property. And the first time I rented it, it was, uh, to a carpenter, a framer, very nice guy that worked in Northern Virginia. He had rented for one or two years and he was never home. He was working hard, nice guy, picks the place up, some of it was a plump tenant. Well, then I rented it again. Well, he moved out to Rodent Falls, another nice couple. Well, it turns out that after they were in there for a couple of months, they brought twenty or thirty dogs into the property. And, uh, over a year or two period, they totally destroyed the property. And I can remember being blamed for it, but I didn't collect any rent or anything and they cleared the person going in. And I think after that, they renovated the property and continued to, to, to rent it again until they sold it. So I think this property had, has had a rental history that, that goes back probably thirty years. And last year, um, had an opportunity to, to revisit the property, um, for, for, for the board of, um, equalization. And, uh, the, the house was there. They cleared some and, and it was a good inspection of, of the property for this purpose. And the property is very private. It's got good buffers all around it. And recently, we approved a tourist home up at the top of, uh, St. Monfils, that was St. Monfils National Forest. This is a modest dwelling. It's got forty acres. Uh, it's not going to affect any neighbors. Uh, I think this use as, as a tourist home here would be limited or no, absolutely probably no impact to the neighbors. Uh, I think it's probably a better use than what it was used for thirty, twenty years ago. It's basically an absentee, uh, rental property that people are absentee owners. So I have no problem with it and, uh, I think it will be fine. And one more quick story here. You know, we, we, we tend to look next door a lot. People are doing and, and people have different attitudes. And back about fifteen years ago, I had a person from Texas. He was a pilot. And he was looking, had a property called, he had to look at it, and right next door, holy moly, with his cars, trucks, rash and all this stuff. And I said to myself, I said, "Well, this is going to be a wasted afternoon showing this property next door to, to where all this trash was." And this guy was very open-minded, being from Texas, and he realized that everybody has a piece of property and that's their business. And he looked at the property next door, I thought, "Here it comes." He goes, "That guy has a very interesting collection of items." And that's all of a sudden. He bought the property next door, built a half million dollar house and has lived there happily over after for the last twenty, twenty-five years. So, uh, there's different attitudes and we have to consider everything. And this application like before this is in Chester Gap, where all the neighbors, you, you had neighbors every quarter of an acre. And I could see there where there's concerns about people coming in every day and parking and this kind of stuff. Here we got forty acres and there's no impact and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mead? I have no objection. I, um, believe it meets the standards of zoning ordinance. I do suggest, um, should we make a motion to recommend approval in addition to the standard, um, conditions we've been including, that we add the two comments from the health department or suggestions from the health department that they upgrade the wellhead part of the use and they pump the tank every three years.
Thank you, Ms. Mead. Mr. Parrish? Uh, yeah, it seems to me like a fairly ideal site for a, uh, Airbnb or, uh, Airbnb or tourist home. Uh, I, I appreciate it when people actually come to the county and, and go through the, uh, system where they get the, the legal permission to do that, because there's a lot of people who just pick up their phone and sign up for Airbnb and go from there and it's up to the county to catch up with them later. I mean, it is a source of income. We are transitioning a little bit toward tourism and this is the most direct link to tourism that I can think of, what you can do in this county. Uh, there's hardly been any, uh, in no incidents that I know of, of people complaining about, um, visitors are coming for the weekend. Uh, there's been plenty of complaints, uh, you know, around rentals, uh, renters. The, uh, I looked at the property. I know it's got a nice pond. I, I noticed that there's a moat path down to the pond and there's a field over to the left as you're facing the pond. And there's some moat paths through that field. Does that field belong to this property?
Correct.
Right. So you go all the way over to the fence next to the right of way.
Right.
Right. So it is in the middle of the property. So at any rate, uh, I, I really hate the input in the position where the neighbors are, are reticent and they're worried and they're afraid of the unknown.
and they're worried and they're afraid of the unknown. But I would, I think it's important that the county stays consistent on our approach to this, these type of endeavors. So I don't have any problem. I noticed it beat up, didn't respond, but there is a lot of site distance there at the driveway, so just hope for the best.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Herring?
I feel very qualified to comment on this application because I've had an Airbnb myself now for almost four years. It tends to be a lesser use than a full-time rental. Generally, they're, it's two days a week if you rent it every week. It, the, if you go through the normal websites, which I think a lot of everybody does, the websites vet the applicants so that there has been, as a result of this, there has been no instance in Rappahannock County of a complaint against anybody who has been a tourist home, Airbnb-type renter. And to deny a person rental use of their property is a considerable aggregation of normal property rights. And it seems to me that in the absence of any appreciable damage and the benefit not only to the owners but to the community itself, this is a very reasonable use.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Appreciate the comments that were made. If I did hear a single thing I disagreed with among the commissioners, but I would add a couple of items. First, on the matter of, you know, are the standards up to date and the sort of thing? I mean, this, if we changed the ordinances every time there was a new website for advertising tourist homes, which had been essentially the same thing for years, rental properties were transient dwellings, which we've been dealing with, you know, we would constantly be changing the ordinance, and people wouldn't have any clear sense at all of what they're facing. The way the process is set up now, we have this special permit and a special exception process that allows us to consider the always unique circumstances of any particular property and impose standards to ensure that legitimate concerns about harmony of the neighborhood and the community are addressed. And I think it's, you know, evolved nicely, and as we discussed several times, we do have a standard set of requirements that address things like having emergency contact safety procedures and limiting the use and providing ample instruction. Hopefully, those are, those are well documented if we get around to making a motion here. So, and I would emphasize the fact that while we often hear the same types of concerns about the unknown neighbors coming in, I just want to emphasize what Mr. Herring, Mr. Parrish said, I've yet to hear the first actual single complaint about an individual in one of these Airbnbs. So I understand people's fear of the unknown, but I, I think we have to look at the, the actual record that we see in terms of public safety and public interest and make our decisions on that basis and not, kind of, concerns, unsubstantiated at least, concerns of the neighbors. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the application with, instead of the normal standards that we apply, maybe we can listen out loud for the... I guess one additional item I would like to add to this question. Since this is a for-profit site and has backdrop potentially for using firearms, I would ask that no firearms be used by any tenants whilst they're...
We have a very clear estate and house rules.
Not that I'm against them, but...
Correct. You are...
I would say so. So maximum six people, maximum two cars, safety features include the working smoke detectors, proper mannequin style detectors, working product signatures, emergency contact lists include the address of the rental, sheriff's office phone number, owner's contract information, and permitted access, in addition to the low-use firearms for any tenants.
And I believe, would you also add the two suggestions that Ms. Mead mentioned about the pumping of the...
And the two items mentioned by the health department.
Thank you. Is that sufficiently clear to the listed second?
A second, I imagine.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The next step is the BZA, where our recommendations may or may not hold sway.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the preliminary review of special exception permit eighteen oh five oh four, take three, I believe, the RSM private outdoor school training facility. Before I turn it over to Mr. Blythe for brief remarks, may I first ask you, Ms. Summers, to TSO?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as you stated, this is Mr. Blythe's third and hopefully final application. The property that Mr. Blythe has applied for is on Surgeon Lane in Amesville. I believe it is vacant property. And again, it's for a private school outdoor training facility.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. I know Mr. Blythe is here. If you care to make any brief introductory remarks before we open the public comment.
I suspect you've heard this so many times, I'd like the members of the audience here to stand up a bit for me. We're a small women-owned veteran business. We help charities internationally deploy to dangerous environments, protect the children and gender security and all those good things. We invite approximately twenty to thirty people once a month during summer months to do one day of training on our land. We run them through various scenarios. We listened to the comments of the board, we took them on board, we canceled the previous application, and we made for a property that's twice as big because we were telling them it was too small, having a forty-acre lot. This is now eighty-five acres. It's also removed from a lot of other residents. There is a slaughterhouse slash sawmill almost immediately opposite at a slight angle, and that individual is more than happy for us to come and work there. Indeed, they will be providing some food and various other supplies to us, so they'll benefit greatly. The chap opposite us is also a paramedic with a fire department. We will hire them, as a comment from one of the board members, in order to provide medical support during scenarios that may result in something chopping over and twisting an ankle. We will not be building any structures as in homes or properties, and we will not, I stress, we will not be using real bullets, they'll just be noise simulators. There is at least eight hundred feet of forest between us and any other human being or animal. We will only be firing noise simulating ammunition. It's not real bullets, it just goes bang, and it's one-third of the noise of a real gun. And within eight hundred feet, it is physically impossible unless you're Superman to hear anything. Okay? Most properties are a thousand feet away. We will park on the land, we will enhance the existing tracks, there's lots of forestry tracks going through. We will invite other people to come and be part of the environmental committee if they're concerned about anything we're doing, there'll be no environmental risk at all. We will do self-contained trimmers on site and off-site, and we will remove them after each course to be emptied. There'll be no litter, and we will, from one of the points raised, we'll not use a carriage, we will use two mini buses, and they will come in about eight o'clock in the morning, they will park on the land, no one will see them, and they will leave at five o'clock in the evening. As I stressed, we only do this typically for one day a month and only once more. This year, we've run four courses. We're running one more in September, so that's cumulative total of five days of training. For the rest of the time, it will be undisturbed and no one will be there. Again, we offer free training to schools, charities, and churches. We're already doing it for a lot of schools. One of our pro bono outreach, social outreach programs is to go and teach teachers about how to go back to shoot under aggressive threats. And we do that for free, and we do it in the schools, we don't bring them off-site. And we would offer that to churches as well, what we've done before. In fact, I just come back from North Carolina where we trained eighteen schools for free. And I go to Houston, in three weeks, do a few schools down there for free as well. So we would offer that to the local community. And we will offer opportunities for employment and other benefits for the community as well. We would hire local for any role players, food, and all the other kind of assets we need to run the courses effectively. I'd be delighted to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Blythe, we'll now open up for the public hearing for this application. Sorry? Thank you for clarifying that. Ms. Summers, we are, tonight we're having our preliminary review of this application in order to decide if we are either prepared to make an application or make a recommendation or to schedule a public hearing. Ms. Mead, I believe this is in your district. Do you have any comments or opinions for the...
I have just a few comments more, I think, for staff and the applicant. I think it's, you know, we're ready to hold a public hearing. A couple of questions have been raised about the ownership and the contract, and, you know, those are legal questions, so if that is filed appropriately, then we'll defer to counsel for that. I do think it would be important to have it routed to emergency services or VDOT, fire rescue, or whatever the term is here in the county, just to get their input on it because it is really relevant. But I do think it's a, land use-wise, a much better location, and we'll hear from the neighbors and it sounds...
Thank you. Mr. Herring, would you like to comment?
I think this is a wonderful location for this use. I'm glad that the applicant has stayed course and searched and found something in the county. I think going forward, that it's realistic to assume that you're going to need some type of, some type of facility down there. And I would just say now that if, when you start the plans for improvements on that property, kind of keep in mind that whatever you do, that maybe have a residential use to it so that, you know, your use won't continue forever, and that the next use of the property would be easier to have a residential. So whether it's a great big room inside, with two bedrooms, an kitchen, or whatever, but I think you're at a good location. And just for reference here to the members, you know, this use, this Surgeon Lane used to have another name, it was O'Hackley's Mill Road, I think it was. And at one time was a public road, and it was, and went all the way to seven twenty-nine. And I believe the Easton family petitioned the board supervisors back in the eighties maybe, or late nineties, to abandon a part of the road that went through their property. And over time, as properties were developed along Shergen Road, the O'Hackley's Mill name was changed to Shergen for some reason on the way that's forward. And then most of that road, then that road became a fifty-foot right away by pollination and division that occurred on that road over the last thirty years. So the road's been improved and it'll handle any amount of this traffic, so I think it's a perfect use. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. And Mr. Parrish?
I completely agree with Mr. Herring.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, it's been improvement over the last location. The, it's isolated, seems like a pretty good use for it. It's, I think, some timbering's going on there right now, some logging. I presume still going to have a forestry plan for, for timber harvest in the future. So you're not really changing the, the use of the property per se in terms of pack and forestal production. I would like to make sure that you're still going to have a timber harvest, you know, forestry plan, which I presume is required anyway. So bumped into one of the neighbors there today, and they were all smiles, they told us a great idea, so it looks like you've talked to all the neighbors. Anyway, it's, I don't see any problem with it, Mr. Herring.
Thank you. I just had a couple of clarifying questions along the line, Mr. Parrish was leading that. You could open time or comment on the plan with respect to, you know, I understand the property right now is almost completely wooded. I assume you'll have to do some, some clearing or greening or some alteration of the site, at least compared to what we understood your operating procedures were at the last site where you did some of your activities in buildings or in some of the open areas where you had vehicles and that sort of thing. I don't know if you're happy that you're prepared to have all those details tonight, but certainly for the hearing, I think addressing the question of what you're doing with the site and the question of keeping a forestry function there seems consistent with the plan, but I don't know if you're prepared to comment on that tonight.
Yeah, it has been forestry, but it's still going through forestry, clearing of the larger trees. However, most of the big trees have been taken away, so there's a lot of kind of low-level scrub. There's lots and lots of tracks going through, so all we do is just kind of enhance the existing tracks, not necessarily make any more ones. And then there's quite a few kind of semi-cleared areas as well, so we're just making use of those without necessarily removing anything substantial. We have some military tents that we put up as temporary structures. So we might put up a few kind of horse shed kind of overhead structures just in case it rains. But we also use kind of big twenty-four by twenty-four foot tents, and we put them up when we need them, and then they kind of use those as structures. I have five kids, I'm repopulating America one child at a time, so the intent, if we ever did get to building anything, is absolutely to make it a residential property so that my children could live there maybe in ten, twenty years' time when we live to serve the county. So is there any questions?
I'm interested, but again, I have one more question. I know that a lot of that Easton property is put in scene of easement. Is this property east, is this a hundred scene of easement?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I know it's forestry, and we would continue that.
Right, okay. I thought you already had this. Okay. Thank you. You have a question?
I have one more, sir. I guess you did a lot of info here, and I don't think you're going to have necessarily the objection of your neighbors like you did before. And I think you might be running a little gun shop in there. And, you know, if it's still permissible, you're talking one day a month. I don't know whether it's being too open here, but if your business grows, you might want to say two days a month, but that I don't see as an immediate impact. So you might just want to say two days a month, so if your business doubles, you don't have to come back here and be in potential violation.
That's right. I mean, if that's acceptable, you would. To be honest, there's not that much need. It's really people going to very dangerous environments, and that's my small population. Most courses are configured for thirty, you know, last week we had twenty.
I guess as close as we've been seeing you, the last it's more, we don't want to see you.
I have an understanding.
So I believe we're ready, ready to entertain a motion to proceed with a public hearing in the next meeting.
I stand down.
Second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much. Going on to the next item of new business, again, the preliminary consideration of special exception number eighteen dash oh six oh one, the however, effective use of this new structure. Ms. Summers, would you like to introduce this application?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Halbert has applied for Jospin Lane, which is in the Piedmont District for adaptive use of, we missed the old Estes Mill. He is looking to renovate that eighteen-twenty mill to have a gallery museum of Dossel, Dossel instruments. He has provided a floor layout of the facility and parking and pictures, and Mr. Halbert would see you to answer any questions that any commissioner may have.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Mr. Halbert, would you like to make any introductory remarks?
Sure. I'm John Halbert, and I've lived in Chincunsal for about twenty years, and I assume that's Piedmont District. And the property is actually not too far from my home, it's about two miles away. It's probably all familiar with the Estes Mills, right next to Two Eleven there. So just looking to renovate it, and there's an existing house there, the Estes House, which I've just got plans to rent out. But I'm going to have plans to renovate the mill, and basically have the museum of the mill, so there's actually, the cod wheel of the mill is somewhat unique, and it's housed in the eastern region. So we don't have any thought about doing any, doing anything other than having the mill be just a museum of the mill. We don't plan on having the mill run going back or, you know, having the wheel work or anything like that. So I'm planning basically just to have it be a museum of, like I said, the Appalachian Bell Smur, which for the last twenty or so years have actually been acquired, probably one of the top collections in the world. So just kind of time to let people see them and enjoy them, but also we'd like to have it be somewhat of a small music venue, so about, picture there, thirty or forty, thirty by forty or so. And I was thinking, basically for the cold months, having, you know, music, musical venue right there, and then for the warm months, potentially a little amphitheater outside. So I've spoken with several of the neighbors, plan on speaking with the rest of the neighbors before the next meeting, haven't had any results so far. Spoken with Randy at VDOT, and have sent him a request for information, haven't got anything back yet, though. Got several letters of approval from post by businesses, Eric Juana's and Maggie at the Roastery, and John Toll, that this historic society is in, policy in approval of that new system of mill. So, yeah. You have any questions, and can we answer them?
Thank you, Mr. Halbert.
Mr. Chairman, I failed to mention in the handouts that I have before you tonight, there was an email that I had received regarding the water super thawing in Sperryville, and they had no objections to the request.
Yeah, it is on City Store.
And I did provide a picture of Dossel, just in case we didn't remember.
Right. Thank you. Well, there is no representative on the commission from the Piedmont District, so maybe, Mr. Bird, you wouldn't mind if I start with you, if you had any questions, comments about this application, as we consider whether it's ready to move on to a public hearing?
It seems to me a wonderful use of a building and a wonderful venue to have in Rappahannock. The only questions would be the Department of Transportation, access, and parking and safety, and the Health Department for whatever kind of health separate situation is necessary. Given a pass on both of those, it would seem to me a very worthwhile and reasonable use of the property.
Thank you. I've been told, not by VDOT, but somebody who used to travel with heavy equipment on that bridge that used to be rated, and I think it was quite high, and I can't imagine that I would increase it so much that it would need to do anything.
I think the question would be visibility, that's probably a greater issue.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the fact that the river is right there in Twain's, you know, sort of a good buffer.
Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I think it seems like a good adaptive use. I think it would be one more point to generate some tourism. And tend to be nice to have a building fixed up, and make it Sperryville a little more attractive. Sounds like a, I don't see any problem with it.
My comment, I have the same comment about VDOT, and then just, I think it would be helpful to know the general idea of number of people and number of times a year for the kind of theater performance. And then I'm sure the question will come up to the zoning administrator, is that an adaptive use, based on the list and the standards and the ordinance? So just to make sure we have those standards addressed, but again, adaptive reuse, I think, is always a good thing.
Yeah, I think there's the existing use and going, you took care of Cornus's place, which is industrialized zone. So the fact, I guess, that business commercial is kind of right near where it is, seems appropriate to me.
I would just comment on that. Be careful, if you are coming in asking for rezoning, it would be a different process. I take your point about the general vicinity. Is that all, Ms. Mead?
This is all, all done.
This property has just kind of slid downhill in terms of maintenance over the last decade, and so I'm happy to see that you're going to find it, and hopefully the mill will look a lot better if you go towards being restored. And I think your museum is, idea is wonderful. I think here that since we're talking about outside venue that's going to have music, and you use the word amphitheater, I think that opens up another issue outside of the adaptive reuse, and I think we need to put a lot of detail into that, into where it's going to be located, hours of operation, how many times per year, how many people, the parking situation. The floodplain down through Sperryville is always funny. It's all different types of floodplain down through there, and when I do an appraisal, it's hard to make sure, I mean, whatever it is. And since Mr. Mike lost a vehicle last month, I'm very concerned about flooding.
Makes me too.
So I think we need, I think we need to look at that a little bit closer in terms of where the park is, and if you, you mentioned that right away through you, I guess you've got to be aware that you can't block that, and if you have permission next door to park there, documentation. I think if right, it's almost to a level of a little site plan, like where you go show the park and where the outside venue is, like coming people, all these kind of things, I think needs to be incorporated, to address it.
Yeah, I have preliminary thoughts about all of those. Just as a side note, I remember hearing that the mill was shut, you know, shut down around the nineteen thirties or so, and that there was a mill pond up there because of the mill stream, and evidently that went out in a big flood. And from what I heard, there's a whole house went down, gone river and exploded, the bridge at Sperryville. So it's been through some typhoon, and so my thought is, is that, you know, there would be many problems in terms of that. And actually, after this, some of this great diligence we've had, I went and looked at, you know, some of the areas that I'm looking at for it in terms of parking, it didn't look much. So, you know, I've certainly provided Ms. Summers with some pictures that I don't know if you guys have looked at yet, but, you know, we'll certainly be available for the next week.
I think you have a very unique venue, and you may attract people, and if you put on a good show, the next time you'll have more people and more people, and...
I don't plan on having a coup d'heure, you know.
I know, but, you know, you might be anticipating forty people, and that's what you can accommodate, and bingo, you got seven or eighty, and right, and then what?
Well, I think it's one of those things where during the cold months, we'll have the music events inside, and it's kind of only so big, so you can only sell so many tickets.
If you tell us it's only by invitation only, or something like that, that's good information to have, but we need to get our hands around what you're going with.
Right, right. Now, I mean, my thought originally was, you know, one, two kind of outside things a month, and then inside, so small and innocuous, that you're ready, they wouldn't be wrong. But, so that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and we went through a process in Sperryville, when we put in a brewery down there in Artson District, and we addressed outside issues there. And Cliff Miller did his barn, addressed outside issues there, so we need to address the outside issue.
You did, you did. Okay. Mr. Henry, I would just pick up on that thread. I, you know, I think the barn or the mill use is wonderful, the renovation is wonderful. We would want to make sure that the outdoor amphitheater tail does not begin to wag the museum dog in this, so that's the, is the primary concern, so I would ask, well, well, tree did not assure that would be the subject of interest, I think, of coming here. With that, I would entertain the motion. I believe the question before us is whether this application is ready to move forward to a public hearing.
Don't know whether it is. I mean, if we want to see more in further about a site plan somewhat addressing the amphitheater issues.
Would your preference be to see that?
I mean, or we take, we take it on whatever we brings in, and then address it and make suggestions for changes, and then put it off another month.
Thank you for that. I believe the question is, do we get, the trade-off is, you know, dragging out this process even further that's been mentioned, or, you know, putting that risk of the information not being, you know, ready for a public hearing, I would pose that question, I think, to the commissioners.
Does this mean a question? What's, I see you're a contract owner. How much time do you have in your contract to address us?
It's under three months. So, yeah, I was hoping that this could be pushed forward to the next time with a positive ruling.
Do you think you would have enough time to provide the additional clarity about specific site arrangement for parking and the amphitheater and the events and the number and like, if you were to plan a public hearing next month, or?
If we could always, someone could always make the motion that that zoning administrator not advertise it until that information has been provided.
Are you?
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Little discussion here. And just let the applicant know, Michelle, the cutoff date to have that information to you is...
And at that point, I think it would need the thorough vetting of, is the theater component going to fall under the accessory or adaptive reuse if it is in fact a new structure? So we would have to make sure it's advertised.
On the twenty-eighth.
And actually, just by way of clarification, too, I do have a couple of, one trailer stage. So it's a trailer that has three additions on it, which makes it kind of square, you know? And then I have two other small stages, which are kind of like riser stages, which are about, you know, not retired than that, seven inches above, if anywhere. So, you know, my thought was, is that they could be, at least at the beginning, I could have those kind of as my amphitheater, you know? And then as, as my plans go forward, then...
To be clear, this consideration will be for a vested interest in this use. If you come in with a proposal for temporary staging, that would be what we would be approving. If you have long, if you there, then care to revise that with a bigger, more permanent structure later, I'm fairly certain that would end up requiring another...
I figure, probably.
...time back in here. So, you know, I know it sounds like you're still working through what exactly you're looking for, but please keep in mind that if, when we get around to making a recommendation, we will be sort of setting parameters, conditions around that, and the more that they're informed by your intents and, you know, the wishes and the type of, you know, the hours of operation, that sort of thing, the more likely it is that we would give you conditions that you can live in. Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
If this three, if this three existing platform stages are going to be in the same location as a later, more permanent platform, that's going to be one platform of equal size of three, then I don't see that any problem, if that's what you, what you was trying to say. If you was, if you were saying these three are going to be completely different than the one you build later in a different location, then that falls on the Gary wave. You're doing, using the same area, and you're going to build something else different there later, but right there.
I think that's my, my...
My point is simply try to get through this and come to us with a plan that we understand well enough to know what we're approving and setting limits that are appropriate for what you're actually looking to play. Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question? Guess not. The next item on the agenda, yes, I guess, any further discussions, or?
The information would need to be, need to be presented to my office completed by June twenty-eighth, which is next Thursday, just to make that clear.
So we have a motion on the table to move forward with a public hearing on this application contingent upon receiving the additional materials about the...
And ensuring that it's in the appropriate class, because adaptive reuse is for existing structures, so maybe the theater falls a very different category.
And that may be something that we need to seek.
I can run that violation through.
Yes, please do. Any further discussion? I think we have a motion that's made the second, and all in favor?
Yeah, it's already seconded.
Mr. Parrish, I believe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for that. Oh, yes, the next item on the agenda is the proposed zoning ordinances. And in your packet, on the board docs, you will see something that should look all too familiar to those of us who've been on this commission for some time. I will note that, just to summarize my understanding of where we are on this, you may recall that this commission had previously voted to proceed and have the zoning administrator in collaboration with the county attorney to prepare a markup of these amendments. And my presumption here is, as Ms. Summers and Mr. Goff started going through this and attempting to do that markup, it was the first opportunity, and I think for the legal review, and some questions arose. So rather than proceeding to create that markup, you'll see highlighted here, for the most part in yellow, I think, some additional comments and questions that have come from their review. As has also been noted, I have some concern about just reopening this entire can of worms, certainly in this context. So what I believe I would like to recommend to the commissioners and at least offer for some discussion is the idea of scheduling a separate works session to revisit these, particularly and really limited to the matters raised in these clarifying questions by legal counsel. And Ms. Summers, do you have anything to add to that?
And I think it would be helpful, that work session, possibly to have Mr. Goff there as well.
Yes. I would note that at least one of these, the most significant of these that I saw was under the one seventy dash sixty E. The comment is, in violation of fifteen dash two dash twenty-three oh seven. That's obviously a legal interpretation, the details of which are completely opaque to us here, and certainly I think it would be required for Mr. Goff to explain that. I read that section of the code. It appears to be related to the, our inability to put these sort of time constraints on It appears to be related to the, our inability to put these sort of time constraints on a vested right, but it was not crystal clear to me. So I totally agree that I think for such a, such a session to be useful, it would almost require that Mr. Goff present. Anybody have any other thoughts or recommendations dealing with this matter tonight?
Anything a great idea, for that and the second item.
Yes, so I think there will be a question as to whether we could do this in one work session or two. And I think we will be coming back to that question in perspective of, to the comprehensive plan update. Perhaps for now, what we could agree to do, if this is the will of the commission, would be to agree that we will schedule a work session with sufficient time to address this matter now, and hopefully, then we'll talk about the complaint. I guess, although we need a motion particularly to do that, I know Ms. Summers, you and I spoke about some potential dates.
And I provided each commissioner with a calendar, just so it'd be easier for everybody to keep their eyes on it fully.
And unfortunately, the first set of dates that Ms. Summers put forward, none of them actually worked for me. I'm out of town the entire week of 4th of July, and the Mondays and Tuesdays, my day job takes me out of the area. So I believe in my conversations subsequently with Ms. Summers, we identified Wednesday, July 11th, and Friday, July 13th as possible dates that would work at least for her and for me. So perhaps, I'm not sure we'll be able to settle on this tonight 100%, but if people know now whether either of those dates are particularly good or bad. I think that Ms. Summers was hoping we could do this during the afternoon. That's a bit of a challenge to know for those of us with day jobs, including myself. So I was thinking, depending on how much time we think we need, maybe we could start these, you know, in the later afternoon, maybe try to schedule these in a 3 to 6 timeframe as a compromise. But those are just my thoughts. I don't want to impose my particular calendar or schedule on the rest of you, but it would be ideal if we could schedule this when it's the most convenient for most of us. So, any particular reaction to 3 o'clock on July 11th? Sounds good to me.
That works for me, and I could even do earlier.
I'm out of town that compared with.
Let's see, will we have another, we may or may not have, will we have another commissioner?
The mayor may not.
The mayor may not have another commissioner. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bird. I'm sorry about that, but it is that time of year. Sounds like that date, 11th, would work for all the rest of us, at least, that's here tonight. What about the 13th? I know, Mr. Bird, throughout that week, that's no good. Would the 13th also be a, no good for Mr. Henry? All right. So let's, let's look at Wednesday, November, sorry, Wednesday, July 11th. Let's hold off on the time at this point, and maybe will we visit this in the context of the comp plan amendment? Any further discussion about these own amendments for this evening? I do think it, I believe maybe the Summers, you were, you were looking at this. I noticed, too, that not all of the previous amendments were addressed. I thought perhaps some of those, I know that, for instance, the acreage requirement and the others, may have been swept up in one of the earlier change sets, the so-called supervisor resolution changes. But certainly, we would want to make sure that we have all of these.
Absolutely. It's been hard with the turnover, you know, the documents trickling down, the turnover and turnover of staff. I do try to make sure that I have the most complete and accurate information. And I apologize when it's not there, but.
Well, why don't we, yeah, I can certainly go back through the records I have from that period and see if I have a version of it. It's not clear, it's not obvious to me that this is an obsolete version, so I'm not sure what is up there. So we'll have to do a little archeology on that. Any further comments on this item? All right. If not, let's move on to, sorry, the next item is the comprehensive plan update. And has, has also been noted that we have received a good deal of tabular data and figures from the Rappahannock Regional Council. Ms. Summers and I discussed the fact that this information had been provided, and we agreed that the right thing to do was to be, to put it on the board docs, to make it available for the public to start to look at. And now that it is available, I think we can all agree that what we need to do is take a look at that information and consider its potential impact on the other items in the plan, and also to what extent that information should be included in the plan. And I know there has been some discussion about the commercial overlay map that's in the plan. I'm not sure that I can fully resolve that question tonight, but I think much of the confusion that I've heard about has to do with, has to deal with the fact that the commercial overlay zone map in the comprehensive plan is really a future use vision aspirational notion. I think that if you look at the text, the discussion is that the plan envisions that commercial use by and large would be concentrated between Rock Mills Road and the old Toll House. So the idea is that with that overlaid area designated for future commercial use, that would guide potential future zoning decisions or rezoning decisions. But that is not to be confused with the current zoning map, which reflects current use and, and the current zoning. And so at this stage, that is the difference between those. If there is, you know, for the most part, I think properties that are in the zone commercial but are not in the commercial overlay district are those which are already zoned commercial or have a commercial use. And properties that are in the commercial overlay zone but are not currently zoned commercial are those that would most likely be considered consistent with the plan in the event that the current owners of those properties chose to come forward with proposed use and a proposal to revisit the zoning of those properties that are currently zoned in some other fashion, partly agricultural. But at this stage, you know, we're not, that's not something that the plan or anything else forces on those landowners. So that's the distinction, that's why those maps are different. But this is something, I think, also that we can discuss in greater detail at that work session.
May I?
Not at this time, then. So my fellow commissioners, just to tee this up again, I think that what is in order here is a work session, ideally, one that we could tack on to the one we just scheduled. I fear that there wouldn't be another day in the next month or two that would suit all of us, given what we've already learned. So I'd be open to suggestions. I don't know how much time we would need. I think we would want to schedule at least three hours with the hope of spending some time on both of these items. But I would be very interested to hear what commissioners.
We could go on to this, you know, we could not post it on the next agenda if we had to go after the following two weeks, the meeting in July.
That is true. I leave on July 19th and don't return until August 9th. So I scheduled this next vacation between the next two planning commission meetings. So as I said, I think, I'm not sure we'll get through all of this in this timeframe, but I'd say the right thing for us to do is schedule this work session, make as much progress as we can. At this point, I guess I'm wondering about the sentiment of others as to whether we want to try to start earlier and make this a longer meeting, or, you know, if you have, how much time do we want to set aside, where are schedules like? I don't know. Mr. Henry, do you want to comment?
Are you talking about the 11th?
I'm still talking about the 11th.
I know we want to get this done, but I guess there's one additional consideration that we have, and since this is major input in all this information here, is that I guess we're down two commission members, two districts are not being represented, and I don't know whether, you know, whether we'll have those two. Do you know, Mr. Parrish, we'll have two members next month?
It's on the agenda for July, beginning of July, so we should have two more members on the 11th. That's a good point. We don't know what their potential schedules would be, but, you know, I, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I think we don't, I think we have to sort of proceed, and it's likely that this is going to take more than one session to get through these. But, sorry, Mr. Henry, if you want to.
I just, I just don't want to hear, you know, comments from anybody in the public in the next four years or more that, you know, this was done with only two-thirds, less than two-thirds of the people of the position you're fielding.
It's a good point. I would, I would note that this being a work session, I think what I would hope we would accomplish is sort of a systematic review of the information before us. We're likely to identify things that look interesting and were potentially impactful on other policies in the plan. And I think there will be some sort of logistical discussion about whether and how we wish to incorporate certain information into the plan. I don't think we'll be making any significant decisions during this work session, but I think in the interest of progress, I think we should proceed in hopes that we would have some of the new commissioners with us, recognizing that we may not. I would say our essential objective during that hearing, that session, would be to revisit the zoning amendments, and that would be especially important that we have legal counsel there at that meeting. And if we accomplish that and have a little bit of time to get into the comprehensive plan, I personally would consider that at least modest success and progress.
If we could shoot first, starting at 2 o'clock, we possibly would have time to get through it all.
I believe that would work for me. I know, Mr. Bird, 2 o'clock doesn't change anything for you, Ms. Meek, I think you mentioned.
I don't have my calendar in front of me, but that, Wednesdays are typically good.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's plan for, give notice for 2 o'clock. How much time do we need to give to provide notice of that work session?
I'll have to check in the morning, and I'll get a notice out inside.
If notice time allows, it might be helpful to know that we have the additional, but given that there's no other day that works, even for those of us who are here, I think we would want to go ahead with this date regardless of the status of the new commission.
And we'd have to notice it as a public hearing.
Right.
Right.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any of that. The last item on the agenda this evening is the update on the Cliff Miller tax amendment. You have a brief statement in the packet. As you may know, the supervisors voted unanimously to deny the change and ask that we consider the use definition as part of the broader review of the, of the zoning ordinance. To me, that leaves things a little bit unclear, because there's, they referred to the so-called May agenda amendments, which are here. I suppose if that is, if that's our intent, we could add that proposed language change to the, to those that are covered in this table for our work session. You know, we already discussed it and addressed it and voted on it once, so I'm not sure how it comes out any different the next time. I believe the specific charge was that, rather than the, the way I thought we would proceed, which would be to consider this imposing conditions, and with the special exception, special permit process, seems like the board would rather we consider, if we're inclined to make this change, adding specific special requirements for driving ranges. So I think that specific question is what's really good for us.
Yeah, I think another discussion that should be considered is rather or not to include golf driving ranges in the same zone as golf courses.
Right, okay. So, I don't know if anyone has any further discussion. I don't think, there's really no decision before us tonight on this matter, but because it was a matter of old business, and because it has been sort of acted upon, but also kind of resurrected back to us, I thought we should have this discussion. Any further comments or discussion about that? So if not, I guess I will, I'll ask Ms. Summers if you would add that to the list of proposed zoning ordinance changes that we are considering this work.
And to be clear, it's just for us to consider it, not the exact language as it was, because I think we discussed last month, maybe a better way is to go about with two different definitions, maybe a major and a minor, small scale, adult standard, so not fit us into a shoe hole, but allow us to have that.
Correct, correct. And additional supplemental standards, like parking, as previously discussed. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Any further comments on that? If not, I believe we have gone through our agenda, and our next meeting is scheduled, or our work session is scheduled for 2 o'clock on July 11th, and our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, July 18th. Pat, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
May I have one question?
No, sir.
And then?
Second.
Paul Fager?